Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the February nineteenth of two thousand and twenty meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Fagin?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Ferrichio?
(coughs)
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation of the Lord's presence?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. In granted this board and their deliberations, this evening, in the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge, what is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every change and justice for all.
We'll hear our reports from our student representatives, Mr. Keen and Mr. Golds.
January was a busy month at the Interboro School. Students have been doing a wonderful job in pushing the law through mathematics and business. The students came back from the new year eager to pick up what they left them. The children had a great visit with our administrator, Wendy Barrett George. She spoke to the children about where her ideas for her stories come from and encouraged the children to find them with her stories.
At Glen Olden School, Sue Carducci. All years Glen Olden has participated in Glen Olden is that. This month, the suits collected hundreds of candy soup and donated them to little countries in the area. This month, our project is called Father and Father. We are collecting new changes and looking forward to learn our brand title in the near future. On January fourth, first, twenty first, our middle school students went on an adventure in the Pocones. The students who met the PVIS requirements enjoyed a fun day of TV. A great time was had by all, and many are already talking about reaching the goals next year to come. On February first, middle school students participated in another spelling bee held at the IU. Glen Olden made it to the fifth round, and only eleven other students were still standing. Congratulations to Ian Quan for a job well done. We are looking forward to our family bingo night on February twenty first. A great time is promised to be had by all. We will be, we will have baked goods, raffle baskets, even filling the bag of goods. Get your tickets now to reserve your spot.
At Norwood, we had six students attend the spelling bee on January autumn at the high school. Macy Cheedam and Olivia Gallagher will head to the DCIU to compete in the next round. Middle school received their report cards on Friday, January third. They participated in the rivalry high school March for Hunger by collecting cans to support our girls' basketball teams. Speaking council made fifteen meals for the families. Norwood's family bingo was held on February eighth at the high school. They had a great turnout. During the month of February, our students will be participating in several different activities for Black History and Indigenous history.
At Prospect Park School, in January, our eighth grade students visited the high school for an activities and electives fair and per, for parent cooperation or current course election for their freshman year. Our middle school students were rewarded for their positive, productive, and proud behavior throughout the second marking period as they participated in a fun round of U-Picket activities, as well as use their knowledge of pop culture, local favorites, and awareness to their, of their school or surroundings to answer trivia questions. Our middle school also had held a spelling bee, and two students, Michael Pappas and Michael Southern, advanced to county finals.
At Tinnicum, from January sixth to January twenty fourth, our eighth grade students have heard Joe Corby's piece of fundraiser. The fundraiser was a huge success, and part of the profits go towards their eighth grade trip to Baltimore. On January twenty fourth, our eighth graders visited the high school to learn about the programs that are available to them next year when they come to the high school. The staff at the high school provide great information, and our students have a lot of it.
At the high school, on January sixth, the high Q team performed well with a second-place finish to an impressive draft dating team. The first coffeehouse performance was held Friday, January tenth at seven in the library. Everyone loved the acoustic music, coffee, tea, hot chocolate, and goodies. On January sixteenth, Interboro High School hosted Unstoppable U, a female empowerment event for our seventh through twelfth grade girls. This event featured over a dozen workshop topics, including women's health, mindfulness, yoga, and self effects. Unstoppable U provided female students with a safe place, safe place to unwind and learn. The activities fair for incoming freshmen was held Thursday, January twenty third and Friday, January twenty fourth. Class sponsors and teachers who teach electives were invited to a table that showcased their electives for activities and recruits students for the twenty twenty-one school year. On Tuesday, January twenty eighth, all ninth graders participated in a field trip to the Delaware County Technical Schools to see the programs that the Aston and World Cup Olympics had to offer. Everyone is invited to the mock rock show tomorrow night at seven PM in the auditorium and all proceeds will be to senior scholars. So that's, that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Keen and Mr. Golds. Moving on to, uh, to the three, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Mary Beth Barnes, who will be, uh, giving, recognizing our spelling bee winners.
Excuse me, everyone. As you heard in the report, we had spelling bees around the district. January was our district bee, so I'm here to present our top three winners with their awards. I'll start with third place. Third place goes to Lacey Cheedam from Norwood.[434.12][434.12](applause) Second place, Sarah Kurt.[444.31][444.31](applause) And first place, Michael Southern.[455.25][455.25](applause) Michael also earned, so this is the district's spelling bee that will be housed at Prospect Park, uh, because Michael was our first place winner.[471.12][471.12](applause)
I'm sorry to give it up for Norwood, but there's been a few years.[481.12][481.12](laughter)
Good job, Sarah.
Good job, Michael.
Prospect.
Prospect.
All right. Uh, at this point, we would also like to recognize our employees from across the district who have provided thirty years of dedicated service to the district. Uh, it's something to be very proud of. Um, we appreciate all the time and dedication that you have given to our students and staff. Many of you that are being recognized tonight, I've had the privilege of working with at some point throughout the district, um, either at Norwood or here at the administration. Uh, and I would like to personally thank you. Um, we could not do the jobs that we do every day without your support, um, your dedication, and how much you care about the kids and the district. So thank you so much. Um, we have special people here tonight who are going to speak on your behalf and share a little bit about you and why you are so important to us here in the district. So, um, I think first I'm going to call Mr. Mills, and Mr. Mills is going to be recognizing Linda Spence and Susan, or, oh, I'm sorry, that's Glen Olden. (laughter) Say, I'm really glad you're here. Come on up, and Steve Russell. Do this. Sorry about that. Come on up, Ricky.
(inaudible).
All right. So I was, uh, asked to write a little piece about Mrs. Donio. I've been, had the pleasure of working with this. This is my twenty-seventh year, and I've been at Norwood a lot of that time at the high school and whatnot. But ever since I've been at Norwood, Ricky has been a staple there. I came to find out she spent thirty years at Norwood School. She was there since nineteen eighty-nine. So, a little bit about her. Mrs. Andrea, we call her Ricky. Donio spent her entire thirty-year career at the Norwood School as a special education classroom assistant. Mrs. Donio started her career in nineteen eighty-nine, ninety school year as a resource, uh, resource room assistant with Mr. Brian Kennedy. From nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-three, Mrs. Donio worked as an assistant in the middle school resource room with Mary Dee Colfless and on occasion Adele Holmes. For the remainder of her time at Norwood, Mrs. Donio has worked with our special education, life skills students and program. Mrs. Donio spent from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand and fifteen, twenty-two years with Julie Reese, a special education teacher in our intermediate grade three, four, or five life skills classroom. After Mrs. Reese's retirement, Mrs. Donio continued to work in the same classroom when we hired Ms. Jane Govanici, who she works with today. Mrs. Donio's positive demeanor and always willingness to help is evident every day in Norwood School. Mrs. Donio also keeps herself busy in Norwood by handling my AM and PM plus duty.
Thank you.[651.12][651.12](laughter)
Mrs. Don, it's a very important job. Mrs. Donio is also a resident laminating expert at Norwood and the only person allowed to run the laminator.[663.12][663.12](laughter) Very important. Don't get broken. Mrs. Donio has been a tremendous staff member at Norwood School, and we'd like to recognize the thirty years of service tonight. Thanks, Ricky. We look forward to the next chapter in years to come.[676.12][676.12](applause) Mr. Russell, Steve Russell, thirty-one years. Uh, I had the pleasure of working with Steve, and I met him when I started my career at the high school in nineteen ninety-three, teaching chemistry. Steve worked in the science wing, as I remember it, and cleaned the labs in the Jason Hallways, where he just liked hanging out with me, wanted to. But he was always up there and cleaned my, my chemistry lab. He was always there, every day. He was always there with a smile, and then we would chat about going to concerts and different rock and roll bands, and both he and I liked to see perform live. Right, buddy? All right. Steve, I'm not making this up, right?[714.12][714.12](laughter) Steve worked for approximately twenty-five years at the high school, a couple of years at the kindergarten academy, and this is his third year at Norwood School. He's doing a great job at Norwood. Steve's there every day, again, with a smile on his face. I just want to say congratulations to your thirty-one years.[730.12][730.12](applause)
Sue used to be at Glen Olden at some point, Norwood at some point in her career.
For a couple months.
Okay.
Yeah.
When your kids were there.
So, as you can see, they have these awesome t-shirts on. It says, "And they have thirty-plus years. They wore them with pride today," throughout the day. But to be specific, Miss Spence has been with us for thirty-three years, and Miss Carducci for thirty-two years. Um, this is a great accomplishment. One thing that I like to highlight is, the first person I see when I walk in the building every morning is Miss Spence. She is there bright and early, she is there in the cafeteria duty, and the person who I don't see because they're in the cafeteria waiting for everybody else is Miss Carducci. So, for many of our students at Glen Olden School, when they come in the morning to eat our breakfast, these are the first two faces that they see every single day, and I could not be happier than they are the faces that they get to see. Um, they run the breakfast, and they quickly transition into becoming the special education assistants that they are in their respective classrooms. Um, they ran the gamut in their times of working from first all the way, I think, up to eighth grade at different times, which is a big transition when you have first graders in the morning and then eighth graders in the afternoon. Uh, but they do a fantastic job. Both women have amazing attendance and are always cheerful there in the morning. Miss Spence is quick to let me know if GYC left the, uh, basketball nets down, and it's going to be an issue well before any students arrive.[864.82][864.82](laughter) Um, and Miss Carducci is an amazing helper in fourth and fifth grade, love recce duty, hanging out by the doors, um, to make sure everyone's getting in as they need to be. Um, these two women are perfect examples of what makes Glen Olden great, the dedication and the loyalty that they have. Um, dedicated employees who make sure our children are safe is by far one of our most important features, and they cannot be prouder of these two women. Um, I will say also, I just have worked with Miss Spence, and we renewed her clearances for five more years.[893.12][893.12](laughter) I consider that, uh, I consider that like a signing of a-
This is on record, you know. This is there on TV. We know it. Okay. I told them, you're retired, I am not.
So that is like a signing of a contract, I think, for the next five years, and Miss Carducci, I'm sure, will work on them together when they come up. Again, it's fun. These women are fantastic and great assets to Glen Olden. Thank you.[919.41][919.41](applause)
You're supposed to retire too, so you're-
Yeah.[928.12][928.12](laughter) Come on up. If I didn't see it on the paper, I would not believe you. You've been here for forty-one years. Forty-one, it says forty-four. That's great. That's amazing.
Yes, it is.[971.12][971.12](laughter)
Yeah, you started forty, so that's awesome. Okay. So, um, Bill did a very nice job putting this together, but he asked me if I would read it, so put a little poem together. Uh-oh. First letter of, with your, with your name. All right. So we have, sincere, appreciated, number one, dependable, you are backing. And then you did your last name, diligent, efficient, motivated, astute, real, capable, awesome, notable, thorough, one of a kind, nice, inspiring, outstanding. Congratulations, your forty-two years of dedicated service in Interboro. And, last but not least, we have Terry Estilio. And Terry is going to be retiring at the end of this year.[1041.12][1041.12](applause) I want to say a couple words about Terry, because when you're a new employee here at Interboro, the first person that you talk to or have to deal with is Terry. She pretty much gets you, gets everything straightened out, paperwork, and the one thing I will say about Terry is that she takes care of you. She makes the transition into Interboro seamless, because there's a lot of paperwork and a lot of forms, and it's a little overwhelming as a new teacher. Um, but she does an amazing job, and we are so going to miss her here, but I wish you the best, Terry. And I know this isn't a retirement thing, but you've been here a really long time, so we recognize that, too.[1085.12][1085.12](applause)
Terry, they asked me to write down a little, so you want to write, write a little speech or, uh, I said, as Terry and I often say in HR, I can write a book. I can stand here all night and tell Terry Estilio stories. So I did not, I'm going right off the, off the cuff. I have plenty of lovely, nice things to say. I actually thought about writing a poem like Bill, but I thought maybe I would not be here in one piece if I, if I were to Terry. So, um, Terry has worked here thirty-plus years, seems as if she's done every job in the district, knows everyone in the district, both who still work here and who have long since retired. Um, Terry has worked in student registration, uh, obviously human resources is what she's best known for nowadays, um, and even worked in something that my parents tried to explain to me called a switchboard. I don't know exactly what that is.[1140.12][1140.12](laughter) But Terry did that as well.
Three dollars an hour.
Three dollars an hour on a switchboard.[1146.12][1146.12](laughter) So Terry has really, really done a lot of things in many, many positions here, uh, for the district. She's worked with Jack Curtin, worked with Dom Scimoppa, Vince Costello.
Ed Cattie.
Ed Cattie, Cheryl Galdow, and she has really spent the last eight years of her career training the current HR director, how to do the job correctly. I think she's done a pretty, a pretty good job at that. To show you, we often say, you know, buck pride, and Interboro is the family, and we throw those sayings around an awful lot. Um, I don't know anyone who exemplifies that more than Terry. Uh, two of her three, uh, wonderful, uh, children work as IEA members here in the district that are here, and I'm getting to that.[1189.12][1189.12](laughter) I'm used to this, that this is going to be good. And then her, her other child who does not work, uh, for the district is married to an IEA member.[1201.41][1201.41](laughter) So when we say things like buck pride and, and Interboro family, as I said, Terry and her family certainly personify that, um, and really are, um, not just great employees, but great, great people. Um, so I really wanted just to, and I'm sure I'll be making a lot more Terry speeches over the next few months, so I'll keep this one brief, uh, but I just wanted to let Terry know that I wanted to thank her, not just for her years of service, but for her years of friendship, uh, not just to me, but to everyone, and there's many things that Terry does for people people don't even know about, because it happens behind the scenes. So, um, thank you very much. Congratulations.[1237.66][1237.66](applause)
Thank you.
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 I will help you write that song.
Great. There's a lot of years. That's right. Two hundred years. I like letting people everywhere. My name's-
I'm sure he has a few.
We're here, Mr. Evans. Do you have any comments?
No public comments, sir.
No comments. Okay. We are moving on to number five.
Number five minutes. Motion five point one, following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next, number six, our solicitors report.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Ms. Riley. Uh, it has been an active month, but a positive month on the legal front for Interboro School District. Uh, a number of the things that my office has worked on, uh, this month appear here on the agenda with some real estate issues, some financing issues, uh, and some other special education issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on to number seven, financial.
Sir, motion seven point one, the tax treasurer's report for the month ending January thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven point two, the fund disbursement in the amount of five million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-five cents be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven point three, to approve the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget transfer.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Number eight, do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Okay. Number nine, committee reports, we'll start with nine point one, Mr. Chabon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on Monday, February third, at seven PM. The first item on the agenda, we had a presentation from our gifted students to talk about a project to spread awareness about the impact of plastic on the environment. They asked the board if we could look into ways our district could help their cause. Mrs. Riley and Mr. High School, um, are talking to the food service company, a nutrition group about possibilities that we can, um, do. Next, we discussed the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget. Marty, uh, went through some of the changes from our meeting in, uh, January. A major highlight is that we were able to decrease the deficit by seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. The decrease was due to a lower first look of, for our medical benefits and a decrease in the P surgery. We also decreased the special education line item because of reclassifications from special education to regular education. Unfortunately, at a zero percent tax increase, we are still looking at a deficit of two point six million dollars. We raised taxes to the index of three point five percent, we still have a deficit of one point one million dollars. When looking at the proposed budget that we're working on right now compared to last year's budget, um, a, a couple of the reasons we're in a deficit are as follows. There's a decrease in state money of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and then increases in negotiated salary and benefits of one point one million, an increase to our DCIU line item by a hundred and twenty thousand, an increase in curriculum and instruction of one hundred and three thousand, an increase in pupil services of two hundred and twenty thousand for our district placements, and an increase in transportation of one hundred and thirteen thousand for special education transportation. We still have a few months before we need to pass the final budget. Um, some areas that we're investigating to try to reduce the deficit are bond refinances, more department meetings, um, that Mrs. Riley and Mrs. High School are, um, handling, and, uh, ways for by student services in-house rather than going out. Some of the areas out of our control but could help reduce the deficit include increases from the state, lower rates for the healthcare, cyber charter reform at the state level, and, um, retirements. Our next finance meeting will be held March second, two thousand and twenty, in the boardroom of the admin building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Nine point two and nine point three, usually Miss Ferrichio gives them reports. She's a little on her to weather the night, so they will be added into our minutes. Okay. And moving on to nine point four, Mr. Goldsboro, Dollar County Community College.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, I was given an, uh, email update on, uh, to the liaisons, uh, on, uh, January twenty-ninth. Uh, a few of the highlights, uh, one is, uh, of the new campus updates, uh, which is the old Prentice Gas Building in Upper Darby. Uh, they, uh, went around and canvassed, uh, a number of people in, in the area and across, uh, Delaware County, and, uh, came up with, uh, some new potential programs for the new campus. Those would include, and these seem to one, be the ones that would be most interested, people would be most interested in would be, uh, health sciences, or health studies pre-nursing, uh, sciences for health professionals, business administration, early childhood education, culinary arts, electromechanical technology, liberal arts, psychology, and, uh, nurse aid courses. Uh, also, the, the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees approved the southeast campus as the name for that newest location, so it's going to be called the southeast campus. And the zoning application was approved by Upper Darby Township on November twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we're doing a feasibility study, uh, for funding beginning in, uh, the spring of two thousand and twenty. Also, new for, uh, for them is that campus shuttle, so students commuting to Delaware County Community College, uh, the Marvel Campus from the Upper Darby Center or the Southeast Center now have a free, convenient alternative to public transit. On Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, the college officially launched a new campus shuttle service with the help of the Craft Group and Delaware County Transportation with the help of the Craft Group and Delaware County Transportation Management Association. So they don't have to take public, people don't have to take public transportation to get there, which greatly cuts down on time. Also, they entered in a few new partnerships, one with Westchester University, and to establish a partnership where Delaware County Community College nursing students can concurrently be enrolled in Westchester University's Bachelor's of Nursing program while studying for their associate's degree. And also there are students, 32 students that are currently enrolled in a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management with a minor in Business Law program that is offered through Westchester and the Delaware County Community College, and also they're looking at adding in the fall, Psychology, and in the fall of 2021, Professional Studies. There's also, they also came to another agreement with Southern New Hampshire University, where students be able to transfer up to 90 credits to Southern New Hampshire University, complete, and complete their bachelor's degree online at $288 per credit, including 10% tuition discounts. So that's some of the updates that I got. Also, they gave some enrollment updates by school district, and for Interboro, as of spring of 2020, there are 339 students that are currently enrolled there, and as far as the dual enrollment of students that are both at, at the high school and also taking college courses, we have 14 that are currently enrolled in that, at that program. Our next meeting is to be held on Monday, April 1st, 2020, at which point we'll be given, I do believe we'll be giving some of the budget information. I had requested that we will be, we should be able to get that information prior to that meeting, so that I might be able to canvas the board and send out any information so that if you, if you all have any questions, that I can take them to that meeting. We'll see if that happens. But that, that concludes my report. I will provide copies of this to everyone as an email, and that way everyone can have their hands on it.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to nine point five, Delaware County Community, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. I love my audience, though. Takes the pressure off, but watch this, it gets bad. The Delaware County Community Unit met on February 5th. Some of the highlights was contract with Rose Tree Media School District for the DCI to provide 10 hours of consultation regarding threat assessment training, also appointment of Rachel Mitchell from Upper Darby School District. We also appointed Ms. Margaret Ravinsky, Springfield School District. Agreement with Southeast, Southeast Delco and Chester Upland School Districts to conduct superintendent searches. Also, we approved 83 cosmetology students from the Asset and Vaulkroft Campus and 12 adults to attend the International Beauty Show. That sounds fun. Approved 14 students and two adults to attend the Family Careers and Community Leaders of America. Also approved 30 welding students to, and two adults to attend field trips to Mid-Atlantic Steel in Newcastle, Delaware. For more news and information, go to DCIU.org. Our next meeting will be on March 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on to nine point six, Community Outreach, Ms. Alonzo.
Okay. Hi. I want to talk about, we've had the Voice of Democracy competition. Interboro was fortunate enough to have a first place winner in the district. There was 24, I think 22, 24 districts in the state of Pennsylvania. There were a lot of entries. Our Interboro person, so finished in the top 22 people for this whole state of Pennsylvania. Then we will be honoring her and other district and host winners on March 18th, to include three Ridley winners who will also be in attendance to get district prizes. Another program that is currently going on that I'm hoping the school can, or the school district can get on board with, there is, it's called Operation Courage is Beautiful, and they are seeking products to be sent overseas. There is a female veteran retreat on March 27th that I would be, I will be attending, and that's when the products would be due. At that time, I'll have the list that I'll get to the administration on things that they are looking for, for these care packages, but in with products, they also ask for notes of thanks, words of encouragement, or even children's artwork that could be sent over. So even if the school doesn't have a donation box, some artwork or letters of encouragement to the female soldiers. Other than that, that's everything I have.
Thank you, Ms. Alonzo. At this time, our student representatives can be dismissed. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Finney there. I heard Little Bird told me you made it into Williamson.
Congratulations.
Moving on to number 10, Mr. Evans' personnel.
Motion, the bond personnel, excellent, be approved, starting with 10.1 on page two and going to 10.13 on page five.
Second.
The motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, a motion that the following items be approved, 11.1 to 11.7, starting on page five and ending on page six.
Second.
The motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education, Pupil Services, motion that the following items be approved, 12.1 to 12.6.
Second.
The motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, 13.1 to 13.5.
Second.
The motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried eight zero. Next up, Mr. Evans.
Motion that the following, from the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, motion 14.1, that the Board of School Directors approve that the following tax collectors be discredited from collecting 2019 school real estate taxes in the amount as indicated.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 14.2, that the Board of School Directors approve the master services agreement from RSM US LLP to perform contract compliance reviews relating to the parking lot taxes collected by the district for calendar years 2017, 18, and 19, at a cost not to exceed $18,000, pending and subject to solicitor's final review and approval of master service agreement and statement of word.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 14.3, that the Board of School Directors authorize the district solicitor to settle the tax appeal for Folio number 45000050406, docket number 2019009977, at an assessment of $15,792,000.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
The motion passes 721. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 15, that the Board of School Directors approve the resolution to call upon the General Assembly to meaningfully revise existing flawed charter school funding systems for regular and special education to ensure that school districts and taxpayers are no longer overpaying these schools or reimbursing for costs that charter schools do not incur. Interboro School District, along with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, are advocating for substantial change.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick comment, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Chabon.
I know Ms. Rurkio wasn't here, a part of her legislative update was going to be, to mention this, and she just asked me to briefly, just explain what this is for to the public. The, the state is pushing a bill that, or there's a bill that's going through the House and the Senate talking about cyber charter reform, and the PSBA, which is the School Board Association, is having an advocacy day, and they're hoping to, you know, have all school districts in the southeastern part of the state vote to approve this, so it gives them more, more power behind what they're saying to get this reform passed. If this reform gets through, it could see, Interboro could see hundreds of thousands of dollars come back to the district that we are paying to cyber charter schools and charter schools. So hopefully this passes, and hopefully this gives PSBA a little bit more power to negotiate with the senators and the representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 16 is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the preliminary Interboro High School Program of Studies book for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 17 is also a roll call motion. Motion to enter into a mutual agreement of sale with the Presbyterian of Philadelphia, pending and subject to solicitor's final review for the purchase of real property located at 1001 Washington Avenue, Prospect Park, PA, at a purchase price of $492,500.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? This is a motion, just so everybody knows, we're looking at purchasing a piece of real estate that is diagonal from the school here to expand some of our services, and as Mr. Chabon had stated, charter schools and cyber schools, we're sending out a lot of kids for different things. We're looking at, we're trying to wrangle them back, and we're trying to do something about it, so we feel as always is a very good move for the district. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those, or Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the reimbursement resolution regarding the Olivet Presbyterian Church.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just, just a quick comment, that this follows the motion that was just passed. The financing of the purchase, we are in touch with the, our bond council, and we are going to be refinancing some of the bonds, and that's going to help pay for the purchase of the property. So by putting this motion on allows us, next month when we, at the finance meeting, are talking to the bond council, to move forward by reimbursing through that process. So that's why there's a second motion in regard to the purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion is for Evans.
Motion 19, that the Board of School Directors approve the revisions of the following policies in the category of finance. 610, purchases subject to bid quotation, and 611, purchases budgeted.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Do we have any other business? Hearing none. You will now hear from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Interboro School District and the Board of Direct and Administrators strive to recognize the educational needs of our students and work collaboratively to provide programs that enable all of our students to receive their education alongside their peers within the boundaries of the district. With the purchase of the Olivet property here in Prospect Park, adjacent to the Administration Building and the Kindergarten Academy, the district can continue to expand parent programs as well as provide new educational opportunities for our students. Some of the areas our district could expand and innovate programs to include but are not limited to special education, literacy STEM, college and career readiness, and the performing arts. The Olivet property will help us to achieve our goal of enhancing our students' educational experiences and invest in our community. The board and administrative team look forward to presenting the vision for this property over the next few months. Also, 8th grade parent night and the high school college career fair is coming up on Thursday, February 27th, in the high school auditorium from 6:30 to 7:15. The high school is excited to meet with the 8th grade parents and students to discuss upcoming transitions to high school. There will be information presented on the program of studies and the curriculum pathways. This year's 8th grade parent night will include five pre-sessions, which will run from 5:45 to 6:15, on the following special topics: transitions, career readiness, dual enrollment, PA State graduation requirement updates, and the career and technical high schools. I encourage all of our 8th grade parents and students to attend. Any 8th grade family that pre-registered for the sessions will receive a grab and go dinner to enjoy before heading into the sessions. Also, simultaneously taking place is the college career fair from 6:30 to 8:30 for all of our high school students. The 8th grade parents are invited to attend the college career fair immediately after the parent night. Transportation will be provided for any family who would like to attend, and all that information is available on our website. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Do we have any comments from any of the board members? I just wanted to touch base on one thing real quick. I'm glad to see the district is having the room and empowerment for our young ladies of this district. It's very important, I think, that they know how important they are, how smart they are, how strong they are, how much they know that this district is behind them, and wants to raise them up, and just, just to know that they have some support in this district. Okay. Do we have any other comments? Hearing none. On Monday, March 2nd, 2020, the Finance Committee meeting with the GVO meeting immediately following, we'll be out at 7:00 P.M. in the boardroom of the Administration Building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors, we'll be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Monday, March 16th, 2020, at 7:00 P.M. I love saying 2020. The next regular monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors, we'll be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, at 7:00 P.M. Meeting is adjourned.
Oh, is there any comments from the public or no? Did I miss that part?
That was in the beginning. If there's anything that you need, you can definitely come up and speak to Ms. Riley or myself after the meeting, we can address.
No way to address the board in public?
Not at this time. In the very beginning of the meeting, we have a public conference. But you're, I guess if it works well, we can help you with any.
Sure, I'd like to give you the opportunity to retain these students in the borough rather than lose them to the cyber schools.
Okay. We'll have to, soon as the meeting's done.
Great.
Discuss, I'll try to myself. All right?
Sure.
Thank you, we're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.